Call the meeting to order, time is 6:02. Director Bisley, please read the attendance.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Jessica Dressley. Carrie Tate. Becky Bysel, here. Stephanie Malm.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Mike Reese, it's not here.
Alright, thank you. Let's please stand, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we would normally adjourn to a closed session for this, but Director Reese has requested the session be open, so we are in session. We are going to be picking up, pretty much where we left off last Wednesday, with a discussion in terms of actions to be taken. I am going to, at this time, again, pick us up where we left off with our counsel, Mr. Edison.
Thank you Chair Davis. I guess, so for purposes of where we left off last time, the board had been discussing the concerns that had been raised, and as part of the deliberations, there was a decision made to table the discussion until tonight, so we'll be resuming that discussion. Couple of things as a preliminary matter that I wanted to bring up would be, first of all, there was a question that came up in between yesterday and today about materials made available to the public pursuant to a requirement in the open meeting law that's found in Section 13D .01. There's statutory reference in that statute about having one copy of written materials provided to the board under certain circumstances made available to the public. I've taken a look at that statutory provision in light of the question that was raised, and there's an exception in that statute that applies to data that would be considered private data under Chapter 13 of the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. And how I think that applies here is typically for an employee under the Government Data Practices Act, data related to options for how to respond to concern that has been raised would be private data, and when information would become public is if there would be disciplinary action that has become final. And then at that point, the basis for the discipline, the discipline itself and the facts supporting the discipline would be public. With respect to school board members, the statute itself is unclear about whether school board members are employees, but there are some advisory opinions from the Minnesota Department of Administration that say essentially that school boards can decide whether their members are employees or not for purposes of the personnel data provisions of the Data Practices Act. And I've talked to Superintendent McDowell about the history in Hastings, and the board itself has never made a determination either way on that. And so, in these types of situations, the position I've taken with other school districts when things like this have come up is that the approach that I've recommended is to treat board members conservatively as employees until the board has specifically deemed them not employees. And so, you know, in the future, if you want to revisit that, you certainly could, and I could talk you through what that might mean, but for purposes of tonight, that's an issue that we would not be able to address tonight because it was not included in the purpose of tonight's meeting for our special meeting notice. So I just wanted to respond to that question right off the bat, and I wanted the full board to hear their response at the same time. And then, with respect to how we proceed tonight, so, you know, the board was discussing the situation where we left off, and so, you know, that discussion can continue, you know, based on where we left off in terms of the ask for administration or anyone else to gather additional documentation, the board's decision at that time was that you weren't asking us to do that. And so, at this point, you know, where we left off last time, we can certainly answer questions as they come up as part of the board's discussion tonight. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the board to continue discussions. And then I guess one last thing I'll mention with respect to next steps here, I mean, I provided two draft resolutions for consideration. Those certainly aren't the only options available to you. You could adopt those, you could adopt, well, one of those, you could adopt one of those with revisions, or you could do something completely different. That's your decision to make, and I can help guide you through that process.
Just so we're clear, and we're back to a level set from last Wednesday, could you please review the options that are in front of us right now?
Yes, so where I left off is I provided an overview of some of the concerns that have been raised. And I know there's discussion about how a lot of you have seen the emails that give rise to the concerns that are outlined in the documents that I prepared. And so essentially, I proposed, I drafted, my recommendation to the board was that you adopt a resolution addressing this conduct, because I think it's something you need to address as a board. Now, how you do that, I drafted two options. One was a resolution disavowing board member Reese's conduct, and we had talked about what that means exactly, and I explained that, you know, my view, reading your board policy 215, I look at that as kind of a level two on that stages of responses. And so that was one resolution that I had drafted, and the other one was a censure resolution, which would be level three in terms of a consequence on your board policy. And other, you know, apart from kind of different categorizations of what the board considers its response to be on the scale, so to speak, the grounds for the conduct is essentially the same as outlined in both resolutions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Edison at this time?
Mr. Edison, who requested that you write the two resolutions?
That was a conversation that took place with me and Superintendent McDowell in terms of concerns that were raised and how to respond. And just so you know, that's not atypical in terms of the dealings I have with school districts. A superintendent is a main point of contact for me with every school district I work with. And I also did, as part of that, we did have some discussions with Chair Davis, which again would be typical in my practice in the sense that the board chair is a representative of the board who frequently has authority to contact legal counsel. And Vice Chair Malm was involved in one of those discussions as well in her capacity as an officer of the board. Now, with that said, what I will say is, in terms of the recommendations that are being made here, and the recommendation to draft, to do a resolution to address this, that's my recommendation as the attorney for the board. And so, I'm, and I would make the same recommendation regardless of which one of you asked me to make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Edison, does either resolution indemnify the school board from legal action should something occur?
I specifically drafted language and put it in the resolutions that is designed to protect the district if behavior like this continues. Now, you know, specifically, can I put indemnification language in a resolution? You know, technically, no. I mean, if someone wanted to sue the school district, they could, and we would defend that. You know, you have insurance coverage to help with the defense of things like that. But the protection that I put in there is, if you have a copy of the draft that I handed out, is in paragraph three of both resolutions. And this is why I think you need to have a resolution that addresses what happened here. I think there needs to be a clear statement from the board that the statements that have been made to the public and the media by board member Reese are not the statements of the board, that he's not making those statements in his capacity as a board member, and he hasn't been authorized by the board to contact the media. And then, in this paragraph, I've also addressed the fact that he shared confidential information without the board's waiver of the attorney-client privilege, as we discussed extensively at our meeting last week, and added language in there clarifying that if that has happened in the past or if it happens in the future, that board member Reese will be deemed to be acting outside the scope of his authority as a board member, and in a manner that reflects malfeasance in office, willful neglect of duty, or bad faith. And I pulled that language specifically from a statute that talks about when school board members are entitled to a defense and indemnification for their conduct. And typically, so for all of you, just so you know the way the statute works, that when you're acting as an official representative of the school district or a board member, and you do something, if you get sued, there's a statute that says that the school district will defend and indemnify you. But there are limitations to that, and when you lose that protection is when you do things that are outside the scope of your board duties as a board member, and when you do things, when a board member would do something that would be malfeasance or willful neglect of duty, or bad faith. And, you know, for me, I consider making a choice to reveal confidential information to be willful neglect of duty. I mean, I think that falls squarely within what that term means, and so that's why I put that language in here.
Could you please cite that statute that you referred to just now?
I don't have the exact citation off the top of my head. I could pull it up for you if you would like. It's in Chapter 466 of the Minnesota statutes.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Edison is working on pulling that up. Are there any other questions? Would you like to queue up for him while he's looking for that one? So, Mr. Edison, while you're looking for that, I will then look for either a motion for either one of the resolutions, so we can start moving this thing along while he pulls that up. Once you have it, Mr. Edison, let me know, and I'll break. You have it. Okay, go ahead.
It's 466.07 subdivision one.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I was wondering, I don't know if everyone saw, Mike sent an email with his statement a little bit ago. At what point would it be appropriate to read that?
Procedurally, that's a question for Mr. Edison. I don't know. This must have been late. 5:34. Mr. Edison, procedurally, when would be the time to read this statement, or is it even appropriate at this point as, it wouldn't have been released to the public? I'm assuming that that would have to happen. I don't know how that works. We got it at 5:34 PM.
Yeah, quite honestly, this came in at 5:34 PM tonight. It wasn't, I wasn't included on the message. I got it as I was driving over here, so I haven't even had a chance to read it. I've briefly skimmed what he sent. So, honestly, I can't speak to whether it'd be appropriate to read it at this time right now because I haven't read it and I don't know what's in there. I mean, it was individually sent to all board members, so if you want to take some time, if you have it in front of you to read it yourself, you could certainly do that, and we could take the time for you to do that.
I guess I just have one other question, because I had asked about getting emails sent that showed, you know, each of these different paragraphs. And I was assured that I would see emails when we were here tonight, so that we all had access to the same information. So I feel that that would be important before making a motion for a resolution.
I'm going through all the emails right now, and I believe the majority of them, you were included on the originals. But again, this came in not even an hour ago, so, you know, that's, maybe we recess 15 minutes? I don't know how long it would take to go through it. I was able to go through it within 10 minutes, but I'm also very close to the situation, so.
Right, so I guess, so there aren't any email, we're just being provided emails from Mike instead of elsewhere?
I know that we've been all CC'd. When he sent them to us, Bob, the news medias, every one of us have had our name CC'd on his emails, and then multiple ones that we've received through the day. So if you look through his, your email, every email that Mike has sent, every single one of us has been CC'd, and the news, and Bob, everybody has been CC'd on them. So if you look through your emails, you have evidence of how many have been sent. Can he continuously send them with our names all on it?
Okay. I just, I was told that I would be provided emails here, so that's different than what my understanding was.
My recollection for, I'm sorry.
Can I just clarify? I'll read the response that I read to you, Carrie, or that I gave you. "Our legal counsel has advised that based on the board's discussion and decision about making information available and to assure all board members have access to the same information, these issues can be discussed with the entire board at Monday's meeting. It was never that you were going to get emails or not get emails."
Got it.
And I think at the end of our meeting on Wednesday, we all discussed and took a vote if we wanted copies, or if we could go into the district and have copies of those emails, and I think that was all turned down, if I remember correctly, that night.
That's correct. So what we'll do, because again, we just received this, is I am thinking, I'm going to give, I'm going to give us 20 minutes, I would think. Stephanie said you went through about 10? You got through about 10 minutes? But you're familiar with them? Okay, I'm going to, then we're going to take a 20-minute recess and go through the emails that we were sent, so we have a chance to read them. We all have them. So we're going to take a 20-minute recess and go through things, and then we'll reconvene.
Sorry about that. 6:40, calling the recess done and we're back in session. All the board members did have an opportunity to review the documents in front of us. This is only just my observation. It looks like the 16 attachments are items that either were part of the agenda last week or were discussed as part of the agenda last week. In terms of how to treat this information, I'm going to defer to Mr. Edison real quick, get some way in from that, and we'll determine what to do with this piece, and then we'll go from there.
So this is, you know, Mr. Reese's response to the concerns that have been raised about him. And, you know, certainly he has an opportunity to respond to this. If you were here tonight or stayed for the discussion last time around, you would have been able to express this verbally. Now, I think, you know, unless there needs to be, there are specific questions about anything that was provided. I think the board could just accept this. You've all had a chance to review it. So I don't know that you need to do anything more than that unless it's raising any specific questions that people feel need to be discussed as part of the discussion tonight.
I guess it would, I mean, it was my understanding that Mike wanted this read in response to all of this so that he, so that publicly his, his opinion can get out there. I, I guess when I, when I spoke to him, it sounded like nobody made sure that tonight worked for him with his schedule, unfortunately. So this was his, his way of, of providing the information.
Thank you. I just want to share my impression after reading these emails, many of which, if not the vast majority of which I had seen previously. It's, I think with possibly no exception, these were raised to be added to the agenda and voted on up or down. And then if they were added to the agenda, they were discussed. So I didn't see any new information in that. And my impression of the summary document provided by Mr. Reese is, is it counting of the number of emails sent? It doesn't provide a, a per topic. I don't see anything beyond that that, that speaks to the specific issues that were raised with, with concern to, to the policies.
I agree that his response is, you know, in the six and a half hours that we were here last Wednesday, it looks like everything was already discussed because it was a part of the agenda. And then in the evening after Director Reese had left, we had discussed it further. I do not feel anything more has to add. So this is a continuation of that particular meeting. I mean, it does provide maybe a little bit of clarification. It's nicely outlined, but it, it doesn't add any substance further or beyond what was already discussed on Wednesday.
I will say the new, the piece that I would say is new that I had not come across would be kind of Director Reese's closing statement that I would be willing to read because it's new and that way everybody would get to hear it. Last two paragraphs. As, again, I'm in agreement with everyone else that the remainder of it were things that were either part of the agenda or subsequently discussed as part of one of the agenda items that we added on Wednesday. And then we went through that and then continued to past 10, when Director Reese departed, and then on into about 12:30, going through all of these pieces. So there's no new information there, but I would be willing to walk through the last two paragraphs if that is something that would be considered appropriate.
While I definitely would prefer, and, and I understand too that conflicts come up, we all have to make concessions, right? It's part of our, our duty as, as a board member. I would definitely, I, I would still be at work if it weren't for this meeting, to, to tell you the truth. But sometimes we have to make sacrifices. But I understand too that every job is a little bit different, every obligation outside of this, and want to respect that decision that he made not to be here today. It would have been nice to hear this from him directly and to have that dialogue since we have not been afforded really that opportunity, you know, in the four months that we've been here, that you've been here, that he's been here, to get to know each other and to understand his position. I'm not opposed to the last two paragraphs to honor his, his wishes. If that's, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, and you, when you talked to him, that's what he wanted, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I would also like to propose that the first, what was it, the first three, first two portions, because that, I mean, that, that's his, his rationale. And then the bottom, yes, is a, is a good closing statement.
I want to echo, what, sorry, Steph, what Stephanie said. We all have our jobs. We all have prior engagements. Mr. Reese has had multiple time or multiple opportunities to talk with the lawyers, to meet with Bob, meet with Brian, to stay here, and he could have been here Wednesday night with the rest of us for six and a half hours. We're here tonight. He's had his opportunity to speak. We could have received this email earlier today too, not at 5:30 tonight. We're all busy. So if he wanted this, his voice being heard, and I'm saying this because I respect everybody's life outside of here, he had the opportunity as well. So we've talked, we've gone over and over and over about everything. So I think just to summarize it, and then we've talked about everything on the agenda. We did everything about that, and then let's make a decision and kind of go from there.
There's no objection. What I will do is per Carrie's request, I'll read the first, the opening, the first paragraph, and then the other things or components that had to do again with last Wednesday. And then I will read the summary two paragraphs as well. All right then. So we'll walk through this, and then we will move on to any additional questions. And then we will move to determining what we want to do with what has been recommended in terms of resolution, disavow, and try to walk through that piece of the process. All right. So I'm sorry I was not able to attend this meeting as I had prior commitments. This is all directly from Director Reese, unedited. The emails that I started to send to the media outlets was due to the lack of response, accountability, and answers. I have on numerous occasions requested information. I am sad to agenda and even legal questions that had been disregarded with little response or even ignored. And then, as you recall, end quote, that was what we went over last Wednesday was the examples that Director Reese gave of those things. Again, I quote, "Each board member has sworn under oath to uphold the Constitution, not allowing free speech, transparency, or even discussions is not keeping our oath. Getting a letter of recommendation created with public funds and telling us we can't discuss it but can be punished by it is absurd. How can the public know about policies or recommendations they were supposed to follow but can't even discuss with them, or anyone for that matter? I did even get a copy of allegations for this closed meeting. I want to be able to focus on the children and their education, but if board members keep refusing to assist, help, mentor, even discuss things with us, then how can we ever get anything done? I expose all this to allow the public to see that the new board members are trying to do what we elected to do. Sincerely, Director Reese, ISD 200 Hastings, Minnesota." There were some responses, responses to things that Superintendent McDowell read last week on Wednesday to responses to this. And I just need to check in based on what I have just read. Is there anything that, more that you need to weigh in on, Mr. Edison?
I don't. I mean, I, I have some thoughts on how this would impact my recommendation, but I'll wait until a mass to offer those.
Fair enough. Okay. So what we have in front of us is a couple of different options. We can go, there's two different resolutions. There's one for censure, this one for disavow, and then there's obviously option of doing nothing, or option D can be any other number of things that we might want to do. One of the things I'm going to do right now to try to do, do you have something? You seem to like-
I'd, I'd be interested to hear Mr. Edison's recommendation.
I was getting to that.
All right.
So one of the things that, what I like to do now is based upon that is, and what's in front of us is hear Mr. Edison's recommendation, and then we can move from there with a motion, a second, and see where that type of vote leads us depending on which recommendation is made. Mr. Edison?
So my, my response, or my, my thought on how this would impact my recommendation, is it just underscores the need for the board to do something? And, you know, in, in response to the, the opening statement in this document about not getting a response, trying to hold people accountable, getting answers. There's a whole nother side to the story to that, and we talked about that last time around. And there's been a lot of allegations made about statutory and policy compliance. And we all sat here and watched how he responded when he was addressed with specific errors in the assertions he was making. And so, you know, I, I think there's, there's no ownership in some of the concerns that have been raised. And then to that last paragraph, you know, from my perspective, he still doesn't understand the severity of disclosing confidential information. In that last paragraph, he's saying, again, that he feels like because it was created with public funds, he should be able to share it. And I think, you know, when you're, this, when I give advice on employers in terms of how to, how to think about disciplining an employer or responding to employee misconduct, one of the things that we take into consideration is the person acknowledged the concerns that have been raised in areas in which they have acted inappropriately. And I see no such acknowledgement here. So from my perspective, I continue to believe that, that some type of response would be required. And, you know, I, I think a censure would be appropriate here. You don't have to do that. But that's, that's my recommendation.
Thank you for your input. Jessica?
I would like to point out that we are not employees of the district. We are voted in, elected members by the community to speak for the community. I wanted to address the letter that was requested by the superintendent dated April 14, 2022. "The board as a whole never discussed nor did we approve the request for legal advice in writing from ISD 200's attorneys. It was never approved by the board to utilize district funds in this manner. This action was taken by the superintendent without direction from the board. We have policies and processes in place that outline how we're supposed to address these kinds of things when we're dealing with board member misconduct. If this would have been brought to the board table, we could have had discussions. We, I would have advised all, all of my fellow directors that these answers could have been answered in ISD 200's policies, the Minnesota statute 13D, Minnesota statute 13.03, and an advisory opinion 11-019. I feel that it was unnecessary to use the district resources in this way, and I don't feel that it was within his scope of work to do so without a discussion of the whole board. I didn't even know that this was going on until I received the letter. So for all these conversations to go back and forth without any conversation with us as a board as a whole was inappropriate."
Any more, have any other statements or questions? Carrie?
Sorry, I just had to process a bit. So I, I, I agree with Jessica. I, I think that getting to this point on Wednesday night, there were a lot of surprises at the board table, and that's one of the, the ethics policies that's in 209. And I, I feel that there was obviously a lot of work that had been done without, not, not just without board approval, but without board knowledge. And that's concerning to me because we're supposed, we're, we're, right, we, we don't hold power individually. We only hold power as a collective group. And so I, I even, as painful as it was, I rewatched a lot of the meeting on Wednesday just because, so that my brain was actually fresh and everything. And Mr. Edison had even said typically, when something like this comes up, the board meets, they decide if they want to go forward with an investigation, and then they move forward with it. And we, we didn't have that step. And so I feel that these resolutions, I feel that the process to get to this point was broken. And I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with, with accepting this as being here, as, as being an appropriate response. Because it seems that, so for me, for my brain, I am very much a regimented person. I make sure that everything is done on step one before I move to step two, before I move to step three. So processing that, Mike, in, in my conversation with Mike, I, I asked him, I said, "Did you ever have input from your mentors, from Brian as a chair, from, from Bob to, to stop?" I mean, a lot, a lot of what's in these resolutions is, I mean, I, I understand that the sharing of the, the confidential information, but there's a lot more that's in this document here. And, and I mentioned it on Wednesday night, that it didn't all happen in one night. And so I just feel like it's unfortunate that we're here right now, but there has to be a recognition that there should have been some other communication before getting here with this, with this, that there should have been, you know, maybe some mentor feedback or something. I mean, even, Bob, you happened to mention some issues that started around the teacher's contract, which was end of January, early February. And if that was the starting point, you know, you were, you, you'd said, I, I pointed out just because, to show a pattern. But if, if the pattern began that long ago, I feel like there, there were opportunities to at least provide feedback to him before it got to this point. And again, it, it's concerning that it, it has gotten to this point. And, and, you know, I said it the other night. I said, it's, it's, it's a level of frustration that I think Jessica and I share with Mike. And it's, and I know Becky, you had said the other night that, that you're feeling attacked and whatever. And, and that's not it. That's not what we've been feeling. It's, it's, it's a feeling as though we are not members of this board, to be completely honest. We've made many requests to have things added to agendas. Obviously, Mike took it to an extreme on Wednesday night to, to point out the things that he wanted to, to discuss. I've done the same. I know Jessica has done the same. And it, it, all of that has led to where we are right now. And with Mike, obviously, he handles it differently than me, but I feel it for sure. And it's, and it's not, it's not just the, the not being able to add things to agendas. And I'm glad that last week we finally had that on there. So now we have a process going forward. That's a positive, you know, direction for all of us. But it also comes down to the, how we've, how the 215, how all of this 215 stuff has gone down. And obviously Jessica and I are, are sitting here. We've had 215 invoked against us. And there have been other questions raised about, about holding others accountable. Lisa, I, whenever you watched the Wednesday meeting, you, you said it beautifully. You said, "We are all here as board members, and only a board can hold board members accountable. So we're all responsible for holding each other accountable." And I think that's where some of our frustration comes. And Mike said it in his statement. He said, he, you know, and part of it is, is holding others accountable. And when you're trying to hold someone accountable and you don't get a response, and, and at that point, it's like, okay, now where, what do I do? Where do I go? So, so what Mike has done obviously is send it again, and send it again, and send it again. Because it's, it's, it's important that we do hold each other accountable. And I think we, we all should, should be doing that. And I think that, again, it just, it feels that there has been definitely unequal treatment for the three new members in this, in this manner.
Thank you for your insight, Carrie. I do, I do want to make a few comments in response to that. So to start off with, you know, the investigative piece. You were, we were all CC'd on the vast majority of the emails, the repeated emails over and over and over again from Director Reese. At this point, I don't think an investigation would be warranted because all the evidence is right there. We're all fully aware of the situation. And the fact that we're here is because of that breach of, you know, releasing confidential information. Correct? We did on Wednesday talk about that step-by-step process with 215, and that's something that I really had to kind of wrap my head around too, when all this was coming to head. I do want to read this again, and I did read it on Wednesday, is that in policy 215, paragraph four, the very last paragraph, it does state, "Most board member issues and situations are intended to fall into category one. Categories two, three, and four are intended for extreme and/or repeated instances of violations where category one has not resulted in a change in member behavior." I also want to clarify something. So not stating that we were not responding, that is inaccurate. There was a response. He didn't like it. So then there were accusations, and you can take a look at the emails too because you have them, is that when I feel attacked, what, what is the response? I already provided a response. That is my response. I'm sorry you don't like it. If you have an issue with it, let's talk about it. But these accusations, these false accusations, I would say, and I can only speak for the emails that I received that were directed to me. When I feel attacked, and I, I, I would personally, and this is solely my opinion, I feel that there was verbal abuse and bordering on harassment. So to protect myself, I did not respond back because my answer was already provided. And I was not willing to get into an argument with someone who did not show a willingness to even, to learn, to, to even, just talking to my husband too, because I've been, I've been really struggling with all of this because it's unnecessary. I want to get back to talking about the kids and how awesome this district actually is. Relationships, be it professional, be it personal, there's, they're about compromise. And I don't feel like, feel like I've been giving a lot and I haven't been receiving. And when I feel, and keep saying attacked, but it's, when I feel like there isn't a compromise there, at what point do I say, "I'm sorry, but I have nothing more to give you?" So I have tried. I have really tried to respond in a coherent and, and, in a manner that I would hope he would understand. I just haven't seen that. And so I just, I, I have nothing more to provide. And then the emails, every single night, I could, I could time it between eight and nine PM, I would get anywhere from six to 15 emails, just like that. And I was afraid to open my emails because I didn't know what he was going to say, what he was going to accuse me. What is the next thing that he is going to accuse me of? With, he doesn't even know me. I feel like we don't know each other, and that's the problem. The communications before getting here. So you, you made a, a comment about there, you know, there was no communication, and we should have taken the appropriate steps, bring it to the, we are bringing it to the board. And it is so egregious that it has risen to this level. It happened so rapidly over the last, what, two months, two and a half months, that it's risen to this level. Lisa?
I, I just see you thinking about time. I will say that, that as I was rereading these emails, many of which, again, I have seen or been the subject of, really since the 12th of April. Since that first week of April, it's really, really escalated, which is not that long ago, and it was not that long prior to the meeting. And it went from, it went to daily emails to including news media to, and, and other unknown recipients, not recognizable to me, at least based on their email, to a release of a confidential client privileged document within, within a period that really has escalated quite, quite rapidly.
But I would have to say that for us, it hasn't. It's been a slow four month. Everything has been escalating to this, so it hasn't been rapidly. So this has just been building up. I don't agree with Mike's process or his, the way that he went about getting to this, his method, to getting all these things out there. But I agree that all these things absolutely needed to come to light, and that we needed to talk about them, and that I feel the level of stress and the level of frustration, the same that Mike does with trying to get things as a board member to the rest of the board, or even talked about with the rest of the board. So that's my two cents there.
Can I just ask, what, what do you want to bring up to the board and talk about that is not being, that we can help with? If we want to talk, I, I just don't know what is being brought up that you're not getting answers for, or again, the answers maybe were- answers for, or again, answers maybe we're not wanting? Or what do you want to talk to the board about? Because you can send an email, we just can't respond. So if you do have things that want to be talked about, I'm just trying to say that this is how we can communicate, because communication is broken. So if you want something to be brought up, can't you send an email? We just can't respond?
Okay, so I'm not going to answer your question, but I'm going to call a point of order, sort of. Not, I'm not like calling an official point of order. But I am asking us to get back to the purpose of this meeting.
Just going to send us back to that.
And the purpose of, of this meeting is to respond to the actions of Mr. Reese, Director We have not had a smooth integration. Nobody is questioning that. What we are responding to is the choice of conduct that Mr. Reese has had most expressly in the month of April, really is what we've, is my sense when I, when I looked back at those dates and those times. And that's the question in front of us, and that is the intent of today's meeting.
Okay, so as the governing body charged with creating and adopting policies, I think that it's inappropriate for us to operate outside of these policies. Adopting, or that we're exceptions to the rules, when we are not, we need to, we need to operate within these policies and within these rules ourselves if we expect others to do so. That's my last part there.
So in terms of operating within the policies, what are you recommending?
Policy 215 clearly dictates that there is a, a course of action that needs to happen. And I think that if this would have been brought to the board in the first place, conversations would have been had with Mike. I mean, I think that you should have, as the board chair, had this conversation with Mike. I know that if we would have had more insight into what was actually going on, I would have had a conversation with Mike about this behavior. So I think that the appropriate steps should have been you talking to him, then us discussing it as a board if it continued. But I don't think it should be slapped all the way up to censure on the first time we're talking about it as a board.
I think the way we got here is because it moved so quickly. And Lisa, unless I'm wrong, had a number of different conversations with him about the direction he was headed. That's not true that she never spoke to him.
It's true in that Mike won't answer the phone when I call him. We did have a mentoring Zoom at the beginning of our term, which, when there was a question regarding the type of questions he was asking, a concern regarding the, sort of the approach that he was taking with regarding data requests, I reached out to him and tried to provide some direction via email, and he indicated that he was not interested in being mentored at that time. But I do believe, but I do believe that, I mean, I, you know, again, as I provided information about not CCing, I think Mr. Edison was very clear in his cover letter about not releasing confidential client privileged information from the attorney. And he was very clear in his follow-up letter, both of which were released. And I am surprised to hear that you were surprised about some of the topics raised at the meeting on Wednesday, as many, if not all, of the emails that I was receiving from Mike, and this may or may not be true from the ones for Brian and Stephanie, over the last two weeks included all board members. So I think it was evident, or it, it shouldn't have been a surprise that that was the approach he was taking.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Edison.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to weigh in with some more context. And I, I talked on Wednesday about some things that were happening behind the scenes. And I just want to address a few things, just for some context here. Because in a lot of ways, I believe that step one of the policy has already been addressed, or we tried to do that before we got to this point. And so, you know, with that, with that letter that was sent to the board, I'm not going to get into the substance of the letter because the board voted on Wednesday not to release that, but I can talk about what led up to that. As was noted here, there, earlier, there was an uptick in, in requests and information in terms of the frequency and both the aggressive nature of the requests that, that was observed starting in April. And so, you know, those are kinds of things with any school district I work with, I would expect a superintendent to call me about that, if a board member is going rogue, so to speak. And what do we do to address that? And so we had conversations about that, just like I would any other school district I work with. And one of the things, and we, we had a lot of very careful discussions about how we deal with this situation. And one of the things that we talked about doing was sending a letter from my office to the board outlining recommendations pertaining to some of the issues that we saw percolating. And, you know, it had to do with data privacy, there were allegations being made against people. I mean, we saw that on Wednesday, all kinds of allegations being made. And the purpose of that letter in part was to talk about the appropriate way to do that, among other things. And so that was an attempt to try to address what we had observed going on. And it, it did not have any effect, in my observation. Things got worse. And, you know, some of the things that, that we're seeing are things that I think we could all agree, I hope, have nothing to do with pending board business. And I, I mean, I'll just give an example of something that I, that struck me in particular as, as an example of this, for those of you who might want to talk about some examples. So on, on April 8th, there is a very long chain of emails between Superintendent McDowell and Mike Reese about a request that he made. And it kind of evolved over time as the superintendent responded to him. And so he was getting responses, but in, in the vein of what was discussed previously, he didn't like the responses he was getting. And so ultimately, he asked, one of the things he asked for was a list of all people that have gone into district school buildings since Bob became superintendent. I wanted to know who they were, why they were there, who had invited them, and what safety precautions were in place to protect our children. So the scope of that request is ridiculous, in my opinion. It goes back over a year and a half, and you have people coming in and out of your buildings all the time. And what possible reason could he have to request this information, other than he's doing some kind of investigation on his own that is completely outside of what the board is working on right now? And so, you know, those are the types of requests that we're concerned about. And then when he doesn't like the response he's getting, to repeatedly send the same request over and over again, and then start including outside organizations. I mean, he went as far as sending something to the Minnesota Association of School Administrators about your superintendent. And so that's, I think, the issue here.
Seeing no further comment from anyone, or any further questions, I need us to move to a vote on the resolution that was recommended, or the other, but we need to move the action forward. Yes, John?
So as we transition to this point, I just wanted to comment that with the resolutions that I, that are provided last week, I did make some updates with the date of the meeting. I changed the date to correct a typo, the date, it references April 27th as the date of Wednesday's meeting, and then it includes tonight's date, since the discussion continued. And there, so I, I have a revised version that addresses that and addresses a few other typographical issues that came up. So when you're ready to, to make a decision, I, I have, Becky and I have been working on this, and we can make sure you have the most up-to-date copy.
If we get a first and a second, then we'll put it up on the screen.
And just for clarification, it, it's, it's not changing the substance of the, okay, thank you. Oh, is that what we're?
The recommended one was for censure, that's, that's where we're at. And if we want to pivot to the disavowal, we can do that, or nothing. But that's where we are. So I'm just looking for a motion on something so that we can move the process forward, however we're going to move it, as a body of six.
I move that we advance the recommendation for censure of Director Reese in accordance with our legal advice, incorporating date corrections and typographical corrections.
Second?
We have a first and a second. We will need to make those adjustments, put it up on the screen, and then we will have to then go to a roll call vote once the resolution is read. So how much time do we need to make those adjustments? About five minutes?
If you can access the same version I have up, I think we've got them all addressed at this point.
All right.
Just give me a minute to...
Absolutely.
Can we have some discussion while we wait?
Yes.
In these resolutions, there is one, one part that references Director Reese's private information that he is requesting as a private citizen. And I don't feel that that's appropriate to include, because as a board member, obviously, we don't lose our rights as a private citizen. So I don't feel that that's pertinent to this document and to, to what is being done. That is section, well, it's section 1C2. I also disagree with section four. It states that, "Given the issues outlined above, the school board hereby formally authorizes Superintendent McDowell to work with the district's legal counsel to place appropriate and reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on Mr. Reese's communications with district staff." So optically, we have an attorney who has, who wrote a letter with a privilege attached to it. When that letter was released to the media, that same attorney recommended these resolutions and is now written in here to execute the decision. To me, it seems like a conflict of interest to have that all so close. And in addition, I don't find it appropriate for a subordinate to determine the punishment ultimately for a superior. I think that that should lay with the board as a whole instead.
While I can appreciate your last comment, I do want to reiterate, or do, do want to point out, I apologize, that the superintendent is essentially the CEO, and we have a duty as board members to recognize his position and to honor his authority. So I do think that it would be appropriate to keep that verbiage in the resolution.
I was going to clarify, I did not write this resolution?
No, I, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that.
That is exactly what was suggested.
No, I was suggesting that the attorney wrote it and was executing against it. Brian?
I'm sorry, Lisa, I was looking at the paper.
Right, I saw that. And I didn't realize my mic was on. In response to Carrie's points, I think first, section 1C2 specifically articulates that Mr. Reese maintains his rights as a private citizen to submit public data requests. So I think maintaining it in here is a good clarification to, while he, you know, that's a, that's a given, we can't take those rights. I think it articulates that we understand, as a board, that he maintains those. I would, when I made the recommendation to approve the censure, I approved it, would consider that as written. Mr. Edison is not executing this document specifically, paragraph four, he's not executing this document, we're executing this document. And I think what we've seen through multiple email chains over multiple topics is that at this time, Mr. Reese's communicating... are part of a response to his demonstrated behavior, and it would be appropriate.
I, I agree with that statement. My point is, I feel that that, that should be determined by the board versus Mr. Edison and Dr. McDowell.
And I'm saying that, that they as, that Mr. Edison as a legal counsel wrote this, but we as a board would be acting upon it, and therefore we as a board are taking the action and setting that as a part of the expectation. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that you agreed with my original statement. Thank you.
So from my understanding, then, so item four, really, at the end of the day, falls upon us.
My understanding is the entire resolution falls upon us.
Well, that's true too.
Right? We're, we're making a decision based on this recommendation. I think that asking the staff people who work on this issue daily to articulate appropriate boundaries is, is just fine.
I would also like to make a comment about that as well. So when we make this resolution, it is the board taking action. We can also take it back at any certain time. So if Director Reese, say 60, 90 days from now, does demonstrate the ability to understand his role as a board member, we can always go back and change it.
So I just want to make this clear. We are authorizing Superintendent McDowell to work with the district legal counsel to place appropriate and reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on Mr. Reese's communication with district staff. That's something that we're authorizing in this resolution.
Mr. Edison?
To answer your question, the answer is yes. And to give some context, you know, the board doesn't have to accept my resume recommendation. You can do something else if you want to. This is my recommendation. And I'm, this is something that, I, I don't take what's in paragraph four lightly, but I'll just be candid from what I've seen. There's an individual, Mr. Reese, who does not respect the privilege of using email to communicate with people. And I've seen this before in my practice, in other places. I've seen people, members of the public in particular, these types of situations with board members are extraordinarily rare, but with members of the public, there are often people who will send harassing emails or try to get into arguments with people over emails or make unreasonable requests via email. And, and one of the ways I've worked through that with school district clients is by putting time, place, and manner restrictions on the way people communicate by email. And the way I approach that, just so you all know, is I try to take a scaled approach, where I work with administration first to say, you, you're communicating inappropriately, you may, you have the right to request information, but you don't have the right to demand answers within an immediate time period. You don't have the right to, to engage in, in disrespectful or argumentative behavior. And we point that out, and we say, if you continue to do this, we're going to put restrictions on the way you use email. And what that might look like is, someone submits an email, and we say, unless the law requires a specific, a response within a specific time period, like a data request, that we'll respond within a reasonable time, which we're saying is a week or two weeks, depending on the circumstances. Or if there's a situation where someone sends repeated emails in the course of a week, one after another, we might say, we will only respond to your request once a week. And you can submit requests throughout the course of the week, but you should not be expecting any response more than once a week, or once every two weeks, or something like that. And then, you know, the most extreme example, which I, I don't really think would work with a, with a board member, because board members need to have access to district email to do their business, but there have been times where I've worked with school districts to, where things have got to the point where we have said that we will not accept emails from someone anymore. to... Where things have got to the point where we have said that we will not accept emails from someone anymore because email is a tool that can be used for harassment. And what we've done in those circumstances is we haven't eliminated the ability for the person to communicate, and it's entirely what we've said instead is that if you won't be able to email anymore. If you want to communicate, if you want to send something in writing, you can write a letter, send it to the superintendent, and we will respond. And so that leaves open the door for people to ask questions, but it also addresses situations where people have demonstrated that they can't use email appropriately. So that's where this is coming from. I've done it before in other situations, and it has worked with success. And I just want you all to know that, you know, if you do move forward with approving this as it's written in paragraph four, that, you know, I fully understand as the attorney for the board that board member Reese is going to have access to information and that he needs access to information to do his job. And that would be taken into consideration with anything that I do in coordination with the superintendent on this issue.
So then in turn, we're also approving the spending on having him... Having the attorney weigh in on when and where is appropriate for Mr. Reese to... Director Reese to communicate.
I think even if we ultimately said, okay, you can do this, we're going to do this, but it's got to be circled back and approved. You know, it's got to be brought to the board to determine. Even if we did that, we'd still have to have legal weigh in, even in our situation. I mean, we'd weigh in, we'd get to weigh in, but we'd still have to have legal weighing in. We wouldn't... We're not equipped to make a determination like that and how that would look from a legal perspective, even if we were to say, okay, this is all well and good, but we want to have the superintendent circle back with us and check in if this is going to happen type of thing, if that feels less unilateral. And I'd be willing to hear a conversation about that.
I think with regard to legal costs that may be required to assure a smooth implementation of this resolution, we have all experienced the costs of this not going well. We've experienced the lost time and the lost opportunity, and I think we understand the impacts to staff and in turn, their lost times and the opportunity to work on other things. So I think, should there be a legal cost associated with implementing and overseeing and providing insight on this resolution, it would be an appropriate expense and an expected expense.
So I'm just trying to get kind of a temperature check. So in Section 4, if there were a line that had something having to do with circling back to the board, does that make it a little bit... The word I'm looking for, palatable? From the perspective that you're looking at it from? I don't know. I'm not saying it yes, no, maybe. I'm just trying to get a feel for where we're at in terms of the writing.
I would feel more comfortable if we, as a board, approved what was going to happen with number four and had that conversation, I guess.
Kind of how that looks?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see.
I also want to say, I do agree with you, Stephanie. I think that there needs to be an end date on this. This can't just be an infinite thing. That there needs to be some sort of a 60, 90 days, whatever, check in and discussion with Director Reese and, you know, decide what we do at that point.
And I think, yeah, when I spoke to MSBA a while ago... Or no, it wasn't MSBA, I apologize. You know, maybe an appropriate time is 60 to 90 days to reevaluate. So I think an individual can... I mean, one can hope, change so that they can be a part of the team within that duration of time. However, I would not feel comfortable putting a timeline on this particular resolution. I think that it should remain as written, but then we add it to, like, say, I don't know, a work session or, you know, a business meeting. And I'm just brainstorming at this point to reevaluate. I don't think that we just do this and then we just ignore it. No, that's not appropriate. I think that there has to be some... I just think like a a performance improvement plan, if you will. But that's, you know, that... At this point, I would hope that Director Reese would actually come forward and say, okay, I'm willing to work with you, because that has not been the response that I've seen. So until that is demonstrated, I would want to keep it like it reads.
Mr. Edison, I have a question for you. If we were to try to incorporate some kind of language in the four that said that in terms of time, place, and manner, that the superintendent, the counsel could bring to the board for consideration and then by some majority vote or how we do it, that's how we determine our time, place, and manner, what would that look like?
We could certainly wordsmith that paragraph if you want to. Just to give you an idea of my thinking behind the way it was drafted is that that takes time to draft something and bring it back to the board for discussion. That's why the language I drafted would authorize Superintendent McDowell to work with my office to do this. So it would just... We could put them in place faster. But if you don't want to do that and you want board input on it, I mean, I'd fully understand that concern. We could put something in there saying that you you know, request that Superintendent McDowell work with my office to propose appropriate time, place, and manner restrictions on his communications with district staff.
Case there, but I understand that's going to slow us down a little bit. Lisa, you had a comment?
I had a comment with regard to the timeline. Since we only meet in action meetings monthly, it feels like that would be not appropriate. I think I could consider something where the school board authorize Superintendent McDowell in consultation with Chair Davis to work with district's legal counsel. We've given the chair authority by being chair in other positions, and that allows the consideration. I would wonder if, to speak to the concerns about timelines, if specific to paragraph four, if there would be a statement that you could think of, Mr. Edison, that would, within the context of that, either that group, either Superintendent McDowell and yourself, or Superintendent McDowell, Chair Davis, and yourself to place time, place, and manner restrictions on Mr. Reese's communications with district staff. These restrictions would be reconsidered, would be reevaluated by those same three people every 30 days. I'm making up a number. Every 30 or 60 days, so that it doesn't get lost. And then if we see that Director Reese grows in his role and grows in his ability to manage data privacy, that we can address it at the board level at that time. But I'm not comfortable putting a full board engagement into it because of our timeline questions. And I feel like this is something that would need to be started sooner rather than later.
I like what you had said, Director Hadeen, regarding, you know, have it read something to the effect, given the issues outlined above, the school board hereby formally authorize Superintendent McDowell in consult with the chair to work with the district's legal counsel to place appropriate and reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on Mr. Reese's communications with the district staff. So we have done resolutions in the past where it reads just like that. So it's the superintendent, it's the chair, you know. Chair Davis was elected as a chair. There are certain authorities that he has, you know, the spokesperson, working with legal. So I think it would be appropriate to have... And in that way, you know, it's... We have a board member addressing that issue as well. So I'd be comfortable with that.
How do we feel about the component that Lisa also mentioned, a piece about to be reviewed in 30, 60, 90? I know those are three we threw out. There, I know you weren't a big fan of the timeline. How about on that element four that Lisa recommended we might do? That way it doesn't get lost. I did... That did resonate with me about Lisa, with the idea of it not getting lost. Because I don't want it to just... Nothing should be in perpetuity, and I don't want it to get lost either. So is there any general feeling about that piece? It seems like right now we're really focusing on four, so I just want to keep the focus there.
My only... We can put a timeline on it, but I want this to go both ways. We need to see action from Mr. Reese and then how we can... It goes both ways, right? So communication from him and also how we're working together as a board and what we're doing together, I guess, and... I don't know how to word it.
I know what you're saying. You want to be in a very different place in 90 days than we are now.
We could be. And so it goes both ways. So I wanted to say we're putting 30 days on this, but I don't want it to just go away in 30 days if we haven't done much or things haven't come up. I want it to... No, I'm trying to say.
No, I get it.
I feel like I do know what you're trying to say, Director Beisel. And I want to be clear that my proposal on this or point for consideration is not that at 30 days, time, place, and manner would be removed, but that they would be revisited and that that would be a checkpoint for the group of two or three people. And you're right, the only way that they would be revisited for change is if there was demonstrated improvement.
I was trying to say, we'll be willing to look at this in 30 days if there's willingness to change and communicate as a whole with the board. That's finally came to me.
Lack of sleep, people, lack of sleep.
So unless there's any objection, let's modify Section 4 to read as we just indicated, and let's see where we're at. Mr. Edison's typing, or Becky. No, Mr. Edison's typing. I'm just looking. No, yes. Yeah.
So I added with input from Chair Davis, how would you like the sunset or the revisitation language to read exactly? I was trying to track the...
I'm sorry, Lisa, you kind of had the language behind that, the tail end. Well, you did kind of. You said, you know, to be revisited in a period not to exceed X. So, you know, I...
Okay, this is... I'm sure I sounded much better the first time I said it, but I would say the time, place, and manner restrictions will be revisited on a 30-day cycle. And I don't know if you have to say by the same people or if that's implied because it's in the same sentence or in the same paragraph, excuse me.
I do recommend adding that in just to avoid confusion, so we're all on the same page about who will do that review.
Are 30-day cycles sufficient enough, or should they be a little bit longer? Or can we expect... Well, 30 days is a long time, I guess, the whole month. Yeah, it's a whole month. Okay. I just wanted to circle back again. Just want to circle back, come back, come back. Becky, can you blow that up just a little bit? Thank you. I'm old. Perfect. Okay. I think that's what we were... I think that's what we're trying to get to, to try to take care of some of the concerns there.
From a practical perspective, I would consider these modifications to be a friendly amendment to my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got this new resolution. We've got a first and a second. In this situation, does a resolution have to be read, or do we just vote on it in a roll call vote? Mr. Edison?
Do you typically read full resolutions before the board votes on them?
Sometimes. Not every time.
I think that in this situation, I do think... I know it's going to take a long time to read through the whole thing, but I think that would be appropriate before there's a vote.
Okay, so what we need to... We have a first and a second. We've had discussion. We've done adjustments. We need Director Beisel to read the full amendment.
Director Hadeen introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, resolution censoring a school board member. Whereas Mike Reese is a member of the School Board of Hastings Public Schools, parentheses, Board, Independent School District 200, number 200, parentheses, District. Whereas on April 27, 2022, and May 2, 2022, the school board discussed allegations regarding Mr. Reese's conduct as a board member. Whereas the school board has determined that Mr. Reese has failed to conduct himself in accordance with school board policy governing the conduct of board members on several occasions as set forth below. Whereas the board has determined that Mr. Reese's inappropriate conduct provides a legitimate basis to censor him. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board as follows. Number one, the board censors Mr. Reese for the following... Censors, thank you. Mr. Reese for the following reasons. A, Mr. Reese has acted in a manner that violates Board Policy 201 and Board Policy 209 by attempting to individually issue directives to Superintendent Mr. McDowell without delegating authority to direct the work of administration. Both Policy 201 and 209 provide that the school board acts as a whole and that individual school board members do not have authority to act on behalf of the board unless authorized by law or unless the school board has delegated authority to an individual board member. See Board Policy 201, paragraph 2, part B, and School Board Policy 209, paragraph C, part 2. B, Mr. Reese intentionally disclosed confidential information protected by the attorney-client privilege to individuals and entities outside of the board on more than one occasion after he was specifically told only the full board has authority to waive the attorney-client privilege. Specifically, on April 14, 2022, Mr. Reese emailed a confidential letter from the school board's legal counsel to five email addresses affiliated with the media and an advocacy organization. On April 18, 2022, Mr. Reese sent a second email containing the confidential letter from legal counsel to the same five outside email addresses. On April schools privileged communications from legal counsel, Mr. Reese immediately responded by sending a third email to the recipient list that included five outside email addresses included five outside email addresses and quoting portions of, portions of confidential correspondence from the district's legal counsel. Mr. Reese intentionally disclosed disclosure of confidential information provided to him as a member of the school board violates school board policy 209, paragraph F, part seven, which states that board members must guard the confidentiality of information that is protected under applicable law. Further, Mr. Reese intentionally disclosure of confidential information amounted to willful neglect of his obligation to act in the district's best, best interests. C, Mr. Reese has excessively burdened district administration with requests for information on various topics that are not directly related to matters pending before the board. Number one, according to information complied by district administration, Mr. Reese has individually contacted district administration via email to individually request various types of information significantly more than his peers, often on issues that do not relate to pending board business. Mr. Reese's numerous individual and repeated requests for information are unreasonable. They are not directly related to business pending before the board. They greatly exceed what is reasonable for an individual board member and they are not endorsed by the full school board. As a result, his request amount to the, to the use of his position of the school board for personal gain in violation of school board policy 209, paragraph F, part five. Number two, the information requests outlined above do not include additional data requests by Mr. Reese, which the district administration has considered to be data requests under the Minnesota government, government data privacy practice act, MGDPA. The board acknowledges Mr. Reese has the right to submit a request for public data pursuant to the MGDPA in the capacity as a private citizen, provided he allows the same procedures that apply to other members of the public with respect to data requests. Number three, Mr. Reese has demonstrated unreasonable expectation and communicated in a way that does not reflect the level of professionalism and respect to the board expects of its members when interacting with district staff. In multiple instances, Mr. Reese has unreasonably demanded immediate responses from district administration and engaged in harassing behavior if he did not receive an immediate response. For example, between April 19th, 2022 and April 25th, 2022, Mr. Reese sent the same request of information to Superintendent McDowell a total of six times. To give another example, between April 19th, 2022 and April 21st, 2022, Mr. Reese sent a separate request for information to Superintendent McDowell a total of three times. In both these situations, Mr. Reese continued repeating the same request after Superintendent McDowell informed him he would not respond unless directed to by the full school board. The school board considers Superintendent McDowell's refusal to respond to Mr. Reese's inquiries appropriate under the circumstances as Mr. Reese was not acting on behalf of the school board when he submitted these requests and he did not follow the district's established procedures for submitting a data request pursuant of the MGDPA. Letter D, Mr. Reese has made a number of allegations against the district representatives and ignored established procedures for addressing his complaints by sending several emails to entities outside of the district, contains various allegations against other district representatives. Pursuant to school board policy 209, paragraph E, part nine, all complaints are to be referred to, to the appropriate administrative officer within the district, or they should be submitted in writing to the entire school board for proper referral according to the chain of command. The district's legal counsel provided additional guidance for processing complaints in a confidential letter to the school board dated April 12th, 2022. Mr. Reese's actions had been inconsistent with board policy 209 and guidance provided by legal counsel. Number two, the above described conduct demonstrates that Mr. Reese dictated his responsibilities as a board, as a member of the board in favor of his personal interests. Number three, the school board expresses disclaims and does not endorse any statements Mr. Reese has made to the public or outside organizations. Mr. Reese does not have the authority to serve as a spokesperson on behalf of the district or the school board. He is not authorized to share private or confidential information obtained in the course of his work as a school board member with the media or outside parties, and the views expressed in his statements are his personal views. To the extent Mr. Reese has inappropriately released private and or confidential information or does in the future, he will be deemed as be acting outside the scope of his authority as a board member and in a manner that reflects self-evidence in office, willful neglect of duty or bad faith. Number four, given the issues outlined above, the school board hereby formally authorizes Superintendent McDowell with input from Chair Davis to work with the district's legal counsel to place appropriate and reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on Mr. Reese's communications with district staff. The time, place, and manner restrictions will be revisited on a 30-day cycle by legal counsel, Superintendent McDowell, and Chair Davis. Number five, Mr. Reese is not to engage in the same or similar conduct as discussed above. If he does, the school board reserves the right to impose additional disciplinary action, including but not limited to pursuing his removal from the school board. The motion for the adoption for that forcing resolution was duly seconded by Director Beisel and upon roll call vote will be taken. The following is voted for the, for the motion. So roll call vote. Lisa Hedin?
Yes.
Jessica Dressley?
No.
Carrie Tate?
No.
Becky Beisel, yes. Stephanie Maum?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
Yes.
Whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted.
That was the only piece of business on our agenda for the evening. So now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
With that, we are adjourned at 7:53 PM.